Good evening.
I don't think you might be able to hear me.
Yes, it's just coming from over this side. You may hear a little difference in the acoustics from what we normally have. Only some of our speakers are working. There we go, we've got some good gain now. This meeting is now called to order. The first order of business is the introduction of new hires. Welcome, Dr. Chase.
Good evening, everyone, and especially good evening to our special guests. This is always a wonderful time of year where we get to introduce our new hires to the community and our board will have an opportunity to interact with them. We, as a school district, really took careful care in hiring these individuals. There were committees, committees made up of community members, school district officials, administrators. Many of the individuals whom we're going to introduce you to tonight went through rigorous interviewing process. Some of them probably went through four rounds of interviews. And that's because we are committed to making sure that we bring the best of the best to the Greenberg Central School District because our children deserve the best. And so it is an honor and a privilege to introduce to you all our new teachers as well as our new administrators. And so I'm not going to steal their thunder. I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves to you. They're going to tell you who they are and they're going to tell you where they are assigned and what they're doing. So I'm going to ask first for all of the new teachers to please stand. The new administrators already stand. Administrators always stand, they stand all day. Welcome to the Greenberg Central School District. I am going to ask for our esteemed administrators not to stand against the wall. I'm going to ask that they come along here so that we all can see their bright smiling faces. And they're still smiling. Okay, we'll start with Dr. Lloyd.
Hello, everyone, I'm Sylvia Lloyd and I'm the librarian at Woodlands Middle High. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Hillary Johnson and I'm teaching chorus at Woodlands Middle High School and I'm delighted to be here.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Gerardo Sacco. I'm a science teacher at Woodlands Middle High School. I'm very excited to be a part of the Greenberg Central School District and looking forward to a successful year.
Hi, I'm Alicia Wigger. I teach at LeF Jackson Elementary School. I teach ENL and thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Robin Jurgensen. I teach 6th grade ELA at RJ Bailey and I'm very excited to be here, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Jie Zhang. I'm a Mandarin teacher in RJ Bailey. I'm very delighted to be here and I'm looking forward to work here.
Hi, I'm Regina Perez. I work at Woodlands Middle High School as a 7th grade Spanish teacher and I'm very delighted to be here and thank you for having me here.
Hi, I'm Melissa Stover. I am physical education and health at Woodlands High School and Middle School and I'm also the athletic trainer after school helping out with the sports team, so I'm really happy to be here.
Hi, everyone, I'm Alice Marie Tennyson. I am district wide and I'm, focus of my being here is as a DCBA and I'm so happy.
Can you do me a favor? Can you just explain what a DCBA is? Because I haven't heard of them, what's that?
Oh, so I'm a board certified behavior analyst. So I really, my job here is to just help improve behaviors and replace inappropriate appropriate behaviors in District Wide across all the grades.
Welcome.
That's my job. And I'm also starting up the K-1 class in PF Jackson for students with autism.
Can you repeat it as you said a little bit louder because I didn't hear it?
I'm also starting up the K-1 class in PF Jackson for children with autism.
For children with autism, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Joanna Khan. I'm the 4th and 5th grade science teacher at RJ Bailey School and I'm delighted and honored to be part of the Greenberg School District.
So, Dr. Valente, I believe there are some teachers missing, like Mr. Mignon, our English teacher?
There are a few teachers who are unable to join us tonight, Dr. Chase, yes.
So we have to make sure that they get to see the board and introduce them?
Yeah, yeah. Whether they have been determined.
Is that it for all the new teachers? Okay.
Those are the teachers who are here and then we have our administrators.
And we have four new admini-- well, two of them are not so new, but new to the position. So please introduce yourselves and tell us where you are assigned. We'll start with Amy Pages.
Hello, I'm Amy Pages and I am the assistant principal of the high school of Woodlands, Woodlands Middle High School.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Sheba Rossi. I'm the principal at RJ Bailey, first year and the 21st year as a Greenberg employee.
My name is Michael McCoy, I'm the athletics director. I spent the last seven years at LeF Jackson as the physical education teacher and I'm excited now to now be in the high school.
Good evening, my name is Dean Barker. I am the dean of students here at Woodlands Middle High School. Happy to be here.
So, before we partake, my board had a chance to find out who you are. I think it will be fitting if the board would just introduce themselves, even though they have nameplates, but if they were just to introduce themselves to you. So we'll start with President Warner.
Hi, I'm David Warner, I'm the board president. And my daughter graduated from Woodlands in the class of 2014. We came here when she was a kindergartner and went up to all the schools and had a really good experience and want to keep the ball rolling in that direction for future generations.
I'm Tracy Neers, I'm a parent. I have a child at ECP in pre-K, I have a child at Bailey in 5th grade, and I have another child at middle school in 7th grade.
My name is Cora Carey, I worked in the district for 36 years at the Early Childhood Program. I had four daughters that went through the school district, graduated. I have a granddaughter that did the same and I have two great-grandchildren now in the district.
My name is Antoinette Darden-Sentron. I've been in Greenberg for 10 years. I have the most fabulous son in the whole wide world. He is a senior this year at Woodlands Middle High School.
My name is Terry Williams and I'm a 15-year board member. I've had two sons graduate from the district and, welcome.
We will now break for some refreshments, as you see on the side table over there, and we'll mingle a little bit for, what do you think? Five minutes. All right. Have at it.
Is Mr. Williams and Mrs. Darnes involved in the picture?
No, not at all.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Just trying to be polite. Sure. Don't get my word in.
Just don't care.
Okay, one, two, three, I'm going to take two. And one more, one, two, three. So far away.
All right. In the interest of time, do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons being considered for board action this evening? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in closed session. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So earlier this evening, we had the introduction of new hires and then we went off into closed session. So skipping back into the agenda, we have, the next item would be NISBA recognition. Dr. Chase?
Do you want me to do it from here?
This is fine.
Okay, from here. Okay, good evening, everyone. Each year, the New York State School Board Association acknowledges board members who have completed a requisite number of hours toward board training. There are four levels that are to be acknowledged. Level one would be 75 points and these people would receive a certificate. There is a level two excellence award and the board members will receive 150 points and receive a certificate from NISBA. And there's also a level three mastery award, which means 250 points received. And then there's a level four board lifetime achievement award. And this person will receive 500 points, receive a plaque, a pen set, and a convention scholarship. Well, I'm very happy to report that NISBA has identified two board members in our school district who are worthy of recognition. First, there is a board excellence award, which is a level two award, and that award indicates that this particular board member will receive 150 points for their professional development and training. And I am proud to give that award to David Warner on behalf of the New York State School Board Association. There is another award. There is a school board mastery award. And the mastery award is a level three, which means an individual can earn 225, I'm sorry, 250 points, a pat folio that looks like this from NISBA, as well as event scholarship to the next NISBA conference, which is at the end of the month. And that board member is Mr. Lloyd Newland. Congratulations.
Yay! A big one.
Here you go. Nice pat folio. Congratulations to Mr. Warner and to Mr. Newland.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Chase.
Thank you, thank you.
The next item on our agenda, I know it's late, is a discussion of the board candidate interview process. Thank you to all the community members who volunteered to fill a vacant seat in the Greenberg Central School District Board of Education. Because of the overwhelming response to our outreach, the board must postpone interviews it planned to have with prospective candidates tonight, Tuesday, September 25th. We apologize in advance for any inconvenience this may have caused and we will be in touch with all the applicants as soon as we have set a new date. I've been calling the board and attempting to set up a date possibly of, I believe it is the 3rd of October for a special meeting at 6:30 PM. Just let me confirm by a show of hands how many people can make that meeting Wednesday. One, two, for good? I believe, Antoinette, can you do it? We have it. So the special meeting is going to be scheduled for October 3rd at 6:30 PM and we will send out a packet with some information and inform the candidates. The location will be right here. Okay? Now regarding the board appointee selection process, I sent the other board members an email, I believe I gave you hard copy, it's in case you're having trouble getting to it online. And I basically laid out a way of getting through the process a little more quickly than by interviewing 18 or 19 candidates one at a time. As I said, it's pretty much been unprecedented that we've had to do this before. I consulted with the attorney, I talked to the vice president, I'm proposing we hold a special meeting and use a candidate's debate style format instead of interviewing people one at a time. That is, we interview people in groups, we come up with a small group of finalists and then we go back and take the finalists and interview them in more depth at a subsequent meeting. I have a procedure with multiple steps in it. I'd like the board to walk through it and tell me if they have any questions about this procedure or if they're happy with the procedure. So, Antoinette?
So, we're not, you want us to walk through it now and...
Everything that we do regarding this process must be done in open session.
Okay. So, let's read this.
Yes.
So, Mr. Warner, you're suggesting that instead of interviewing each candidate one by one, we have them up on the dais, kind of like the candidate's night when you're running for an election, and one question is posed to all the candidates to answer one after another?
Correct. That cuts the time greatly and means that you're not the target for very long at a time. So we basically fill this board table with group one of the candidates. We sit out here in the audience, we ask a question, people take turns answering it, and once we've gone through about three or four questions, then group two comes up and sits at this table and we go through the same process, asking the same questions. And then we select three people as finalists. In the event of the tide, there may be slightly more than three people, but we select three people as finalists and then they proceed to an additional interview at a later meeting.
Okay, thank you.
David, question. Did you inform everyone about the number of candidates that applied for that position?
There were 19 applicants. I believe one has withdrawn so far. And then there's an eligibility question about another one.
Okay, all right. I just want you to make that clear and maybe that's the reason why.
That is the reason why.
That format is done and done transparently and openly. So, there's 19 candidates and that's why we're going through that process. Okay?
All right.
So there will be a total of, like, questions? There'll be a total of three questions asked?
I think three questions for the first round should work out about right, maybe two minutes per question. We'll have a clock, so there's a response, otherwise it could get bogged down very quickly. But that's how candidate's debates are done. So I think that should work. The PTA council usually uses about a minute and a half per question for that level of detail. All right. Any other questions regarding this process? All right, then can we approve this process? Do I hear a motion that we go forward with this process as written?
Some will.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, we have a process. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
So you will also, in addition to this meeting, inform all the candidates through maybe a letter or a telephone call, an email, how do you plan to outreach?
We will have a packet and we'll require a signature for that packet. And the packet will contain a cover letter in which I will describe the process, we'll have eligibility requirements, we'll probably send them a copy of our five-year goals as well, maybe some NISBA information on what the role of a board member means. All that packet will go to each person, they'll have some time to think about it and determine what they want to do.
Thank you.
Yes, Cora?
Do you think you'll have enough time by the October 3rd date to have the candidates get the packet, go through the packet, and be ready for the interview?
Yes, since initially they were told that they were going to interview tonight, yes, I think we can do it.
You think so, okay. But they didn't have a packet tonight, they weren't given a packet, I'm just wondering...
I need to get that packet out very soon. I'll work on that tomorrow.
Okay.
And just one more for clarification. We have nothing else on the agenda that particular night, right? No other board business?
This is a special meeting entirely for this process, nothing else.
Okay.
All right. This brings us now to statements from the public. I need to read a short piece. You may know that the Warburg Campus Draft Environmental Impact Statement Public Hearing was held on September 20th. The record's being held open for written testimony until close of business on October 4th. If you happen to speak on this topic this evening, I'm not sure if anybody's signed up for that, but if you have, you can speak on the topic of campus consolidation, environmental impact this evening if you wish, but if you want to guarantee it gets into the record and requires a written response in the final environmental impact statement, please provide a written record of your comments to our assistant superintendent for business, Mary O'Neal. M-O-N-E-I-L-L at greenbergcsd.org. That's M-O-N-E-I-L-L at greenbergcsd.org. She's sitting right here at the end of the table.
Was she not S.I.V.? S.I.V. Don't speak for it or speak for it?
You can speak on it, but if you want to get it into the record, you also need to submit something written. So speak on it, go ahead, but write it down too and hand it in to us.
But, the, I thought the... It's the law.
Because it's the law. In order to get it into the...
It's the law.
In order for it to make it into the environmental impact statement, you need to give us written records because that's the part of the statement that's open.
It's the same as you request something that doesn't exist.
Okay.
So it's a safety...
Right. It is a law. We held the written record open, therefore we need something in writing. You have until October 4th to submit whatever you want to submit in writing. At that point, the written record closes. Okay, let's see, the first person on the agenda appears to be Kiana Washington?
Good evening. I have some questions for Dr. Valente. So will I address them to you because he's not here? Sure, thank you. So the New York State data for 3 through 8, when will you present that information to the community?
So there is a education personnel committee meeting. That information will be presented then and community members are welcome to attend. In addition, Dr. Valente will be throughout the school year presenting information to the community, but the data is still embargoed, so we can't present until the embargo is lifted.
So have you seen the data as superintendent?
Of course I have.
Okay. No, I didn't know what embargo meant, meaning is it at BOSI's or is it with you?
So embargo means that only the administrators and the teachers can see the data, but it cannot be made public until the embargo is lifted by the Commission of Education.
So I'm going to request if, we can also have a presentation at a board meeting. You know how you have the principals present? Because your educational committee meeting's usually about 4, 4:30, not everyone's able to make it, so I'm just putting that request, if one of your monthly meetings, we can have presentation of the state data to show that academic progress from grades 3 to 8 for the past maybe four years to show where we are growing in the Greenberg School District. Also, the other question that I have is how is the ALP program going here in Greenberg? That's what I wanted to ask Dr. Valente.
So actually, after visiting ALP classes myself, so far the ALP classes are going well.
Okay, can you tell me the demographics of the ALP program?
Sure. The demographics are, in terms of demographics, are you talking about racial demographics?
Racial.
Okay. So the ethnic demographics are pretty much even. We actually gave a presentation to the entire school district at our convocation, which is televised and it's on Channel 77 that outlines the demographics, where we have it evenly divided, white, Caucasian, African-American students and Latino students.
So what do you mean evenly? So it's 25% African-American, 25% Caucasian, or is it...
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but there is an even distribution of students as it relates to African-American students, Latino students, white Caucasian students. There's also an even distribution of male, female, if you're going to go into demographics as deep as that. We also have a very interesting mix of students with disabilities and general ed students in the ALP program, and that is from LeF Jackson all the way through Bailey Elementary School.
So if I'm an outside and I walk into an ALP program, what would be the difference between the curriculum in the ALP and curriculum in a general education class 4, 5, 6?
So, as we discussed last year with all of our principals and with everyone else, the ALP curriculum is a bit more rigorous than the regular curriculum. Students have different exposure in the areas of math, English, and science. The ALP curriculum uses the new writing program that we just adopted in our school district and they're also working very, very closely with Todd Bench in enhancing the science curriculum. So it is a little bit different and I also invite you to go into any ALP classroom to see for yourself the difference between the general ed and the ALP classes.
Thank you for the invitation. How can you assure us that this will not become a tracking classroom? So it's not tracking, it's not the students that, parents on the board, or, you know, I like this parent. How do we make sure that we continue to make sure this is enrichment for students that can maybe do a little bit more, go a little faster? What are we doing to ensure that? Who's monitoring that?
Sure. So when you use the word "tracking," can you just define exactly what you mean by tracking?
Tracking meaning, you are the cream of the crop? This is your class, so we're going to put you there and everyone else is over here. So we just, that's what I mean when I say tracking.
So it sounds more discriminatory.
Yeah, it does. That's what kind of like tracking.
So in my world, tracking means that, you know, the kids are on a trajectory and you're monitoring what they're doing, but when you're talking about discriminating kids based on the fact that they are board members' kids or these are the parents who are more outspoken?
Right.
No, we're not doing that. This is why there was criteria to get into the program. You might recall that there's criteria in that they take an examination, the COGAC examination, which all students were afforded the opportunity to take, which shows an ability whether a student can interact with a more rigorous program. In addition, we're all looking at state assessment, we are looking at eye-ready assessment, there's teacher recommendation. So not every child who takes these examinations get into the ALP program. There's a criteria that was set so that these individuals can get into the program. We've had parents who've appealed because their kids did not get into the program. We went through the appeals process to make sure that the student who meets the criteria did in fact get into the program and we're pretty much almost at capacity.
Okay. So can you also explain to me how we are going to have enrichment for all?
So we continue to provide enrichment for all students and not just necessarily just with the ALP students, because at the end of the day, it's our goal to offer opportunities for students who are not in the ALP program to have an opportunity to enter the ALP program. And so we continue to provide enriching programs. We just adopted a new writing program, which is an enriching program. We're currently building our literacy model so that we are providing more rigorous literacy instruction. We're constantly training, well, we're still in the midst of training our teachers, we just had a big group of teachers with us on Monday to provide more rigorous literacy instruction. As you are aware, we adopted the Wilson program last year?
That's remediation, though. I'm talking about enrichment for all.
No, 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 no. Wilson is not remediation.
Which one? Which one are we saying is not?
So Wilson program through foundations that we adopted and also we adopted the words program that was used at Bailey Elementary School and that's also used...
The Just Words program. You're talking about that one?
Yes, and that we also use for the high school. It's not necessarily intervention, it's also used for prevention. So that is part of enrichment, to ensure that literacy instruction is consistent from grade to grade. And we've been working in that effort for the past two years.
Okay. So I guess you've made a point that the writing program was being used for ALP. So is there a writing program for everyone in all the general education's classes?
Sure. So it's a writing program that's used throughout the entire district.
Okay, so it's not just ALP.
Exactly. So that we have a consistent model when it comes to writing from elementary all the way through high school.
So what happened to six traits? Are we just pushing that aside?
So six traits, not so much as we're pushing it aside, we found another program that actually works better for our population. We found a program that we can use all the way through 12th grade and so that children will have a consistent writing model and that they're used to the language and the discourse that comes with writing from elementary all the way through high school.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warner?
You're welcome. Yes.
Have you ever in your history here in Greenberg Central School District had 19 applicants to want to be part of the Board of Education?
Not since the year 2000. Other people can maybe go back further than I, but not since 2000.
Mr. Newland, have you ever?
This is historical. This is first out.
This is historical and I think we need to make note of that, that this is historic, we're making history here in Greenberg. So I just wanted to congratulate you because 19 applicants is really big. Congratulations and thank you, Dr. Chase.
Okay, thank you. You want to speak?
No, I have a question.
What, you need to, you need to...
Sign up.
Here, sign up. We're not done speaking, so you can sign up. The next speaker is Rita Jones. Good evening.
I have some questions and I have some...
Um, I have some questions and I have some comments. Uh, first of all, on page five, you're hiring, um, F, Safety Coordinator. Um, at the end, I'd like you to tell me what that job entails. Excuse me. Um, also, I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Smith because he did a great job with the bio. As everyone knows, the bio of Doc, the Reverend Dr. Hughes was up there, and not the bio, the picture, but we needed the bio, and he did a great job, and he even included the church, Union Baptist Church. So I just wanted to publicly thank him. It's a great job. I just noticed it as I came into the board meeting. Um, some parents from Bailey are complaining that the playground, um, I know all children's playgrounds have sand or some sort of thing to buffer the kids when they come off the slides. Um, this has been missing from there for a long time, and that's ridiculous. So that needs to be addressed, and I believe the fence was fixed, but it's broken again, and that's dangerous for little children to play. So I think that needs to be addressed. Um, let me see, what else? Okay. Um, today I visited Bailey, and as you know, Ms. O'Neill, I visited you during the summer. I think it was the summer I spoke with you. Um, you're a machine and at Bailey. And the monitor you have there, I think this district is turning into something it should not be, and I've noticed it for a while. It used to be a very friendly place. I don't know, and I know this monitor came from Highview, but I was showing her my past that I had, and she didn't, she didn't even look at it. She didn't want to hear it. And I don't know what you've instructed her there, but I told her to call you or Dr. Chase because I was going into the building and I was not going to show, put my driver's license in there. As I told you, it's an infringement on the parents when they have to put their licenses in any machine. First of all, whatever infraction they have on that license, it's private to them. They're parents of children, and they're coming in for a purpose, and they shouldn't have to put it in there for, for you to have their personal information. And you told me you don't store it anyplace. Well, anytime you put your, anything in a computer, it's stored someplace, and there's so many people out there stealing information. So that's an infraction on parents, first of all. And secondly, I've been in this district longer than any of you have been here, and I've been going into these buildings, and I'm tired of the way she behaved. She had no clue. I was showing her, and she just didn't want to hear it. She finally had, I don't know if she called you or Dr. Chase, because I said to her, "Call Dr. Chase or call Ms. O'Neill." She got on the phone, and, uh, she finally had to call the principal to come downstairs to escort me up, which should not be. Okay, and I don't want it to happen again. I have always, I've been to every school in this district. Everybody knows me. If she doesn't know me, she should have found out who I was. I volunteer my time and take my time to come in here, and I don't think I have to be. I was so disgusted with the whole thing, and I said to the principal, "Are we going to stand here or are we going into the building?" Because actually, I was bringing things from the Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund catalog to distribute, and I had told the principal I was coming. All right? I shouldn't have a problem getting into the schools. And I'd like you to know what is, because you told me there were different ways of getting in. As the principal said, since I had that staff, whatever it is I use, I shouldn't have had a problem getting in. All right? You can answer now if you want to.
Okay.
Can you show me what you're using?
I don't have, it's in my pocketbook. Well, it's one of the things that has my name on it, and First Vice President of Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund. What's the problem? My picture is on it, and I don't think I look that much different.
I, I, I just haven't seen it.
So Ms. Jones, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention, and yes, the young lady did reach out to us. Um, and let me just start by saying, I apologize for any inconvenience you may have faced today, but it is now our procedure for everyone to sign in and to go through the lobby guard system. It's part of who we have become. As, let me finish, please. I give you, please let me finish. It is part of what we have become as a society. I go into every building, and I have to go through lobby guard. My board members have to go through lobby guard. Um, I'm not really sure the ID that you're referring to, but, um, we did not distribute any ID to any parties, um, for full use. What we did do was we actually, uh, did a test run of what possible visitor passes might look like, and so we gave it to three employees, and we gave it to another person to use because they frequent the building, just as a test. We haven't distributed that yet, so I'm not really sure what pass you're referring to. That's why Mary...
I've had one for years, and I came in here when you'd talked...
But I'm not finished. I'm not finished. I just want to answer.
You're not finished?
I don't want to do that, but I, I just want to answer your question. So, um, it is part of who we are, and it's a requirement. I'm going to go as far as saying this. Tuesday, when we had our event at the school district, we had a person to come into Bailey Elementary School, and that person was flagged in lobby guard. And as a result of that person being flagged, we discovered that that person should not be in the building. That person was on a list, and that person was removed. That's why we have lobby guard, to protect children. And although it might be a minor inconvenience to adults, it might take you another twenty seconds, another thirty, another forty-five, but just know that we had someone enter the building just the other day who had no business in our buildings, and that's why we have lobby guard. I had a group of dads with me the other day through our Dads and Donuts series, and we were talking about some of the safety protocols, and I was really pleased to hear how they applauded the safety protocols that we're putting in place because it's done to protect kids, not to inconvenience adults, but to protect kids. Just as when we go to the airport, we have to show our ID, we have to show our license, and there are other places where we have to go. You go to the State Education Department in Albany, you have to go through the same process. And more and more schools are adopting this, and we've become the cutting edge, and I know it's uncomfortable, but it is who we are, and the one thing I'm not going to do is debate having to keep kids safe. I'm not going to do that.
Nobody says you should not keep...
I'm, I'm still, so we're constantly, we're constantly making improvements to make sure that the process for getting into our buildings is efficient and it's quick, and we're constantly making improvements because it is new to all of us, but it is what we have to become, um, as, as, as any school district to keep our kids safe. And again, I apologize for any inconvenience. I'd love to see that pass. Uh, maybe, Mary, we can work with Ms. Jones to get her one of those test passes so that you don't have to go through that process again, and you can be one of our test pass people, so you can trade in your old one, you can keep your old one, but maybe you should get a new one so that when you go into the buildings, you can go into quickly and give us some feedback about that new test pass that we're using with other people. So thank you so much for your comment.
Okay, um, I, you know, why is it that Bailey is having so much...
Your time is, your time is up.
I know it's up. I have one more thing, and I have some questions that have to be answered. Why is it that Bailey is always having people come in? That's kind of strange that you say someone is in there that shouldn't have been in there. That's kind of weird.
It is.
But anyhow, um, you did answer my question, page five. Uh, what is the coordinator? What do they do?
Okay. Safety coordinator. There's a new title, new position being created?
This is basically, it's not, it's not a position yet. It's just we're creating a new title for a district-wide safety coordinator under civil service.
Okay, so it's not a new title. You'll take somebody that's working here already?
Well, no, it's a tested position, and currently, there's no one on the list who have taken the test, and so we're just basically asking the board if they would, um, establish a new title in the district, and once we get the list, we will begin to work from the civil service list.
Okay, so you're saying it would be a new person in the district, a new position in this district?
Yes, it will be a new, it will be a new position in the school district, yes.
Okay, did you answer the question about the playground at Bailey?
Uh, let's see, there was a, there was a whole, there was a problem with the fence.
Yeah.
There was a lack of sand.
Lack of sand or whatever else you put on the bottom of playground.
So, yes, Mr., uh, Ms. Jones, and I know your time is up, and I'm going to move quickly. I'm going to ask Mr. Falcone if he can just respond to that.
The playground launch has been ordered for all playgrounds in the district. Okay, so, um, we're waiting for the contractor to deliver it and to install it at all the playgrounds.
Okay, the fence?
It's a playground launch.
The fence?
Yes.
The fence?
Uh, the fence, the fence was, uh, was repaired. You're talking about the one that had a hole in it? Yes. Okay, uh, the, the scene, assuming went out there and they mended it together. Um, you know, they're not fence people, but they mended it together and it's closed.
Thank you. Walter Simon.
Good evening. I'll try to be brief yet because I'm trying to cover a number of topics. Uh, the first one is consolidation. I think we have an excellent, I've been to several of the meetings. I think we have an excellent plan, uh, for the district, but what we cannot assume that because we have an excellent plan, it will be approved by the voters. So a strategic, quite frankly, marketing plan is needed. I know we have consultants, and you, we're waiting to get the numbers before you go public, but I think you're missing an opportunity. You could go public without the numbers by just talking up the need of consolidation. You don't have to talk numbers, and you could, so I think you should consider, uh, letting your consultant firm start reaching out to the public because I think, you know, I've been here for thirty-eight years, and thirty-eight years, we've been talking about consolidation. We have come this far, and failure to me is not an option. So we have to make sure this passed, so that's one thing. Um, uh, and to...
Thank you for that.
Okay. Uh, the, the other thing is the processes you just voted on of replacing board members. You know, I've served, I serve on several boards. I have never seen a process like this. I don't know if, if, if...
I've never had nineteen candidates.
Okay, I don't know if the, um, the laws governing, uh, schools are drastically different from the corporate law, uh, governance laws of, of, uh, of nonprofits or religious institutions. But the process that I'm familiar with, if there's a, if there's a vacancy, you make it known, people send in the application, you, you take the top, which in the board's best, uh, opinion field, these are the top three, four, whatever the number is, you have an interview, the board elects that, that person, and they serve only to the next election. So they would serve...
Yes, we're doing that.
Yeah, so the process of going, having eighteen people, I think is a, oh, well, you made the decision, but I think that's way overboard. I don't think it's necessary. Okay? So I just wanted to, to point that out. The other thing that I have mentioned in the past, you really have to look at, uh, how you structure these meetings. People come here to the meeting, and they sit down for forty-five minutes to an hour. You know, that's really unacceptable, that people come here and they just sitting around for sometime as long as an hour before you start. So I know everyone's busy. You have your, your work sessions and, and board meetings, but you also have to consider the time of the public for people, you know. I had something to do, and I was working at home on some reports I had to do, and I stopped, and I ran here. That's why I'm still in my gym st-, you, I ran here at eight o'clock hoping to say, speak, or say what I'm saying, and leave and go back home, and that's not the case. So you really need to look how, look at how you structure these meetings because it's really inconvenient toward the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. McCleey? Iris McMcCleey.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay. Uh, first, uh, I received notification of the meeting last night, and I went and, uh, was, it was very informative. Thank you, and thank you for sending me the, uh, Greenberg Central School District five-year plan, and, uh, in looking at it, I noticed that, um, well, first, I'm here to, in support of RJ Bailey, okay, and, uh, in the community there. The school has a long history of being there. I started fifth grade there fifty-seven and, uh, graduated in sixty-five, second class to graduate from Woodlands. And, uh, I'm looking at the plan, but I'm trying to understand. I see that as the years go, the first year, uh, between Jackson and, and, um, RJ Bailey is maybe about four or five hundred thousand, but then you go to twenty-one, twenty-two, and, uh, you go to twenty-three, twenty-four, all the others, I mean, those schools are more than RJ Bailey in what you're maintaining. Maybe I'm missing something, so I don't know why the budget is so, is low at RJ Bailey and all the others are higher. Is there, and looking at this report?
Basically, what happens, and you're looking at the last page of a giant binder in which they've gone system by system, school by school, determining what needs to be fixed and replaced, not brought up to current code, but fixed and replaced over the course of five years. If the systems are expensive to replace, then you end up with a higher total. If the systems are less expensive to play, to replace, you have a lower total. To, to answer your question, you'd need to delve into a, a little more depth and detail on what's in each school, and we can provide that information because it's all public. We can, we can foil it and get it to you.
Okay, I would like that, okay, because I don't know where to get that information from. What you sent me was one page, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm looking at that page, and I'll just show, I'll just say, um, twenty, I'll just use Bailey and, um, and Jackson. Bailey was five million, six, seven, six, five hundred. Uh, Highview and Jackson, all, both of them are four million and something, and the middle high school is nine million and something. Then I go to twenty-one, and, uh, Bailey is seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, Highview Elementary, one million, six hundred thousand, Jackson Elementary, one million and eighty-nine thousand, and the middle high school, five, five million, four ninety-five. I go to twenty-two, Middle High School, eight fifty, Bailey Elementary, two to hundred and ninety-five thousand, uh, Highview Elementary, five fifty, five hundred fifty-eight thousand.
You're talking about the playground.
Jackson Eleme-, I'm just saying, it's just that it seems, I, I'm just trying to understand what's going on. If Bailey expenses, it's getting lower and lower, I don't know.
Oh, well, the other thing that happens is they look at the systems that are most in need of repair and replacement, and those things, it is felt, need to be replaced quickly. So what happens is they say, over five years, the most, the, the most urgent things, we replace them, replace them first. So if you look at the totals, then the first year, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of forty million dollars, right, forty-one, something like that, and then it gets lower as, as a total district-wide because you've gone after the things that need to be fixed first, uh, and, and so it's all front loaded.
But the budget is still low for Bailey versus all the others. That's why I'm just trying to get that across.
That's correct. So we have to delve into more depth and detail to give you that.
Well, it seemed that we're spending more money on the other schools than we are at RJ Bailey, is what I'm trying to say here. Okay? All right, then, I was invited, uh, I said I would like to be, to be a part of the committees and, of this committee and...
CAC?
Right.
Instruction Advisory Committee.
And I was invited by, uh, by Mrs. Chase, your, uh, Superintendent Chase invited me, but I have not gotten, I only went to one meeting, but I've never, I haven't gotten any more emails about any other meetings that you maybe had. I went to the meeting over at, uh, the mansion, but I'd never been notified about anything else. I was just notified through, uh, an, a, a community person about the meeting last night. I did receive something from, uh, the Hardsdale Civic Association last month, but I said, well, there's meetings going on, but I don't know about them. So I did say that I would like to be part of it, and I haven't heard anything else, other than the last time I was at the meeting over at, the first, at, uh, that, that I was invited to at the mansion, and I did go to that one, but I haven't gotten anything else. Okay? And also, uh, so I'd like to be included, and not only that, I think in the Fairview community, so that's where the school is, and we, we know that certain things need to be done, and we want the best for our children, okay, as well. Okay? And, but it's, it's very hard to see why there, um, you know, unless we are involved in the process, being notified. Let's come out and meet with the tenants, meet with the community people, let them know what's going on. Let them know what you plan on doing for the children, okay? And, um, and what...
Go ahead. Finish your sentence. Your time's up.
Okay, so, yeah, that, that's it. That's what I wanted to say about that.
Okay, so we need to get you onto, onto the list. I think we have at least...
I thought I was.
meeting.
I thought I was.
And we're about to have a presentation on some of the information that has to do with that. And at the end of this presentation, there'll be a question and answer period. So, you'll be able to ask a few questions about that. But we'll try and get you on that list.
Okay. I gave you my email last night.
Yep.
And I think everybody, you know, you should have it, right? You got it now. Okay?
I have it.
And, let's see. And we still would like to know what it would really cost to fix Bailey.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. We'd like to know that, because we would like to do whatever we can to see what can be done. And I understand the flaws, the problems that Bailey has. Okay? And I know Highview also needs, not Highview, but Jackson needs a lot of things. Okay? And you need to know the expense, what it's going to cost to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And the last speaker, your name is Morris? All right. Ms. Morris.
Good evening.
I do have a question. In reference, I have a question in reference to what was already spoken, but prior to that, Lobby Guard, do you have updates and data in reference to Lobby Guard, how often it breaks down and how often it actually works, it functions?
Basically, we requested some information on statistics, on usage. I stood in front of a Lobby Guard machine after someone complained about it not working with smaller groups of people and watched, you know, six or seven people go through in very rapid succession, and it worked fine. I don't have any, I don't have any statistics that tell me Lobby Guard fails a lot. I have, I have a few incidents of people saying it had to be rebooted on occasion, and the new Lobby Guard is supposed to have more capacity than the old Lobby Guard. So, I'm not seeing the problem to the extent that, it doesn't seem to correspond to the level of complaints I'm getting.
I still think there would be good if you do have some data in reference to the rebooting, actually how long it does take, and when it does break down, as well as how often it functions. So, I think that would be something that would be beneficial to everyone, especially since, if I'm not mistaken, you did buy some more Lobby Guard.
Lobby Guard Defender, the next generation of, the next level.
Yes. So, I think it's important. In reference to setting up the board meeting for the candidates, and your process for when you're meeting, and you have your work session, you come back, I think the way you presented is very disrespectful. The board meeting, if you're going to have an hour, the public should know it's an hour. If you're going to have an hour and a half, we should know it's an hour and a half. I think it's really called disrespect. And I've seen it since we've been coming frequently now to your meetings, and it's not respectful to the community at all. Also, in reference to setting up your candidates, I think that's a disgrace. The way you said you're going to set 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, almost as if you're little dogs, you're setting them up at a table, and you're going to ask some specific questions.
It's the format of the PTA Council Candidates Debate that we adopted. It's what happens when you actually run for the board.
That's okay. But the way you expressed it, Mr. Warren, really was disrespectful. I think you could have said it a little more cordially. Okay? It just, it didn't sit well with me, and I don't know about anybody else, but it definitely did not sit well with me. It's almost like you're putting your name in, I'm going to have you here, I really don't have time to talk to you, but I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, and you're gone, and then you have another group, and you're gone. It was the way you presented it. And that's how I felt. Okay. When it comes to the OUT program, is there a certain amount of people that are select students, I should say, that's selected, or do you have a wide range of students that can be selected to the OUT program?
Dr. Chase? So, we have a capacity for each course that's offered. So, there's a capacity, I believe the number's 25, 22 or 25, I don't remember, but there is a capacity by which we don't want to exceed. And we are pretty much at capacity at this point.
Does that have to, will that also affect those who are in honors students? I mean, you have a group of honors students, you have out students, you have-
So, Ms. Morris, we don't have honors students at the elementary school, so this is why we have the OUT program, to identify students who are prepared to, to take on more rigorous work. So, this is the Advanced Learning Program, that's, ALP is the acronym for that. So, it does not necessarily contradict any other program. This is the program. Some school districts call it Talented and Gifted, some call it TAG, some call it the Gifted Program. We call it the Advanced Learning Program.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Okay. But it is 25 students. Now, do you have more students that are gifted, that could be in that program?
All of my students are gifted, but there are students who meet the criteria for being in the OUT program. We do have students who are on the waitlist, and as I explained a little bit earlier, there was an appeals process, and so, we met with everyone who appealed. Some people even brought attorneys in for the appeals process. But we accommodated based on how well the student met the goals, the criteria to get into the program. But we do have a waitlist in the event that a student happens to exit the OUT for whatever reason, because kids do have the option to exit. We don't encourage that. We encourage kids to give it a try, to work really hard in the program, but there's, there's an opportunity for other kids to get in.
Okay. So, then when they're in the 7th, 8th grade, the OUT program is no longer?
So, the OUT program is no longer, and then you go into your honors program.
Okay. Okay. But 25 students, I'm shocked, out of a certain amount, that's, that's a low number to me. That's a very low number.
Not necessarily, because you might have 25 who are in the ELA ALP, 25 who are in the math out, 25 who are aha. So, you're talking about a wide number of stu-
Okay, very good. Okay.
Right. So, we have opportunities, and we did it that way because we wanted to give kids multiple opportunities to experience challenging program in, whether it's ELA, but it may not be for math, or it's math and it may not be for ELA, or it might be the sciences.
Okay. That's a larger variety. And diversity. Highviews, Highview, Highview School, I heard there's only one African-American teacher in that school. I would like the board, along with yourself, to really look into that, with the population of students that we have, and the representation, and if we're going to talk about diversity and representation, then I think that's something that we really need to look into, and do something about, not just look into, but do something about.
I want to underscore what you said, not just Highview School, district-wide.
It's district-wide, thank you.
So, district-wide, that is something that the district is taking a hard look at, and we're working very, very hard to ensure that there's diversity and representation. Thank you.
All right. That concludes the public input portion. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from CS Arch. You wanted to angle it to make it more difficult for us to see it, and easier for them?
Good evening. Thank you all for sticking around for this. We are going to review the capital project development. I apologize for the slides, I think, between our program and the office and the PowerPoint, the fonts are a little bit, there's a replacement, so it might not be as clear. So, tonight's agenda is, we're going to review the secret public hearing that was last week. We're also going to review the last community meeting that we had, which was also the same, the same night as the public hearing. We're going to review project scope, where we are now with cost, and development up to date. And then we'll talk about next steps. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there was a public hearing for the secret process, which was to review the draft environmental impact statement. And there were several organizations that attended, and they had comments and questions. And so, it was all recorded, and we were provided a summary of some of the comments, and we would like to just, we summarized a few of them that we thought were important and that need follow-up. The Poets Corner Civic Association attended. They're interested in understanding what are the educational advantages of consolidation, which is part of the vision of the project. So, let me just back up for a second. The purpose of this presentation is not necessarily to go over the district vision, which we've covered in the past already. This is really to explain the path forward to achieve the vision, and we're working now more so on an overview of the plans and the project altogether. So, this was, this is part of the step in the process that just occurred. So, back to the hearing, the other thing they were interested was in the year of the build starting, they had some concern about 2022, and they would like to look at a phased approach, or they think it should be evaluated more clearly. The Juniper Hill Civic Association also asked why they had not been, they didn't contribute to the draft environmental statement. They would like some more meetings and opportunities for community input. So, just so that there's an understanding, this is actually the period where the input is being received. And again, this is following a very standard timeline for the environmental impact statement. They did like the idea of phasing, progressive taxes over the years, and they had some concern with removal of trees. And one of the things that we've taken a very close look at is actually, we've gone through a very rigorous reduction in, in the amount of trees we're taking down by looking more closely at the site overall. The fire department chief was there. He had asked to include another, some additional hydrants closer to some of the high school spaces, and particularly the boiler room and the kitchen and at the mansion. And some Bailey neighbors felt that they were not notified, and they want the sale of Bailey to be reconsidered. So, those sort of summarize the hearing. The process for the public hearing is that there's an open input period, as you mentioned, as the board mentioned, until the end of the, at the end of the week, the actual document is produced, and each one of the comments actually has to be responded to in the final report. So, all the comments that are received will be addressed in a final report that then will be submitted. The same evening, we had a community meeting, and this was one of several that we've been having with a very large group of members of the community. This, the community meeting actually happened before the public hearing. So, this community has been very engaged with the entire process. They've been providing feedback and input as well, offering their ideas, kind of representing what they feel the community will support and not support. One, a few things that came out of it were that, that the district should expect some very direct questions about bond terms, interest rates, et cetera, as it relates to bonding the project. They asked if the district had looked at alternative funding mechanisms. So, for example, increased sales tax, or cost of sharing with the town, or corporate donorship for some of the spaces. They would like to see more tangible results to sell the project, so what, really looking at what are the academic outcomes, and to be able to share that and communicate that. And the PR really should focus less on the buildings and more on the academics. Will my child be safe? This is, the safety and security is a big part of this project, and that's been coming up, and will be addressed as well. And really, talking more so about the public relations and community, and communications, and how critical that will be into helping to sell this project moving forward, and passing a vote the first time around. So, at the last community meeting, we, we're still in a preliminary state of, of understanding the overall project cost. And at that point, we were looking at a project cost of $139 million. For those of you who are fully aware of the project or not, that entails a complete, got, a complete renovation of the high school and converting it to a true high school, so moving the 7th and 8th graders out, building a new grades 3 through 8 school, and then converting and providing an addition onto Jackson to convert that to a pre-K through 2. So, consolidating the districts from five schools down to three schools to, to improve the academic outcomes, but also to, for some more cost efficiencies and savings long-term. So, the total project cost was about $183 million. We're looking at an energy performance contract, which is a performance contract that is contracted by a consultant who looks at overall cost efficiencies related to energy performance that you can actually pull out of the capital project and fund separately. So, we think that we can get about $3.8 million worth of that through different measures. And then, taking into account the sale of Bailey and Highview, which has been estimated at, assessed at $20 million for the two buildings combined. So, looking at those total costs, they're looking at a $160 million project after those reductions, which turns out to see, what, to be approximately $127 a month for the average assessed home at $486, or at $100 value, $26 a month. So, the community feedback, what we received, this is what we presented last week, the feedback from the community group was that they felt that $127 a month was too high. They thought that $75 a month impact would pass without, hands down, no question. $100 a month has a very good chance of passing if the PR is good enough and we can answer these academic program questions. So, they asked us to look at ways to reduce the project cost entirely. They questioned some of the things we were doing, the extensive road renovation, road work and site work in the capital project, and they looked, they asked if we should reconsider phasing- They asked if we should reconsider phasing the project again, which is something we've already studied. So we spent the last four or five days taking a closer look at scope, which we've been doing all along, but trying to deliver the program that supports the district's vision. So not reducing any academic spaces or program that would affect the vision of the school. So what... Right now, we're looking at taking out... These are the removals from the project that we presented last week. At removing the mansion from the project, renovations to the mansion, not building a new athletic facility that was a small building to support the field and the track with bathrooms, a concession stand, storage, and locker rooms. Taking the elementary gymnasium out of the 3-8 building, building one much larger gym that supports both elementary 3-5 and 6-8, and can be separated for two separate gyms. Not rebuilding the tennis courts, just resurfacing and replacing the ones in their own location. Not doing dugouts at the baseball field and football field, and removing a parking lot that we were planning to add to Jackson to support some future space. We also looked at much broader site scope of work. So we've removed some repavement from West Hartsdale to the ECP, a new water service loop from Woodlands to the mansion, roadway and parking repaving, some lighting, and some sanitary lines to the transportation building. So all of these things we took out of the project to then get us to another project, overall project cost. So after all of those changes in scope of work, we're at $171 million, so we were able to shave quite a bit off. And again, looking at what that entails after we take the $3 million off for the energy performance contract, and then the sale of Bailey and Highview, we're now out at a $148 million project, which has the implications of $24 a month on $100 value, and for the average assessed home, which comes from 2018 data, at $117 a month. So one of the things to understand is that the district does not get much aid from the state. In fact, it only gets 10% aid. And it's... The way aid works is it doesn't... You don't receive 10% bait on all of your construction costs. You only receive 10% aid on what the state establishes as your maximum cost allowance. So for example, if you're... For the high school, we have an estimated value of renovations of $50 million. The state may only aid 10% of approximately $30 or $25 million. So that number is established actually by the state, and we're waiting for those numbers still. But we can make a general assumption, just based on experience. So this is just a graphic of the site development. What you're seeing is the high school in this location, the road work, that some repavement of all the existing roads, parking lots that feed to the fields, the resurfaced new... The resurfaced existing soccer field. One of the things that we've done to really reduce the amount of land clearing is we've actually are looking at relocating the track and field over to some land, and using the existing track to build a new building on, because that area is already cleared and flat. So we have a lot less land disturbance by relocating the existing field and building on its site now. The other thing you're seeing... So that's the new 3-8 school in this location, which sits between the high school and Jackson. We're reconnecting a road that goes all the way through, and building a classroom addition to Jackson to support the enrollment. This is just an overview floor plan of Jackson. I'm not going to go through this, as everyone is very familiar with it. But essentially, we're building 20 new classrooms to store pre-K, K1 and 2, along with special education classrooms and some specialty spaces. We're also... Each one of these buildings entails a new secure vestibule, which is a big part of the plan. And we are minimizing the amount of new construction and working with existing space to provide that piece. This is the floor plan for the new 3-8 building. It's a two-story building. The building will be divided so that the 6-8 community, a learning community, which is essentially middle school, occupies this part over to the left. And the 3-5 community is set between this part of the building and over. So keeping these students very separated on different wings, with communal space between, which is the gyms, the auditorium, and then music spaces. Each one has a secure entrance, a separate 6-8 entrance, and a separate 3-5 entrance. And one large gym that's split, so that there's a 6-8 middle school gym and now a 3-5 gym. Again, the building really stacks. It's a very... A pretty straightforward plan, really good sightlines for safety and security. Guidance for the middle school would be located on the second floor. The library would be one of the shared spaces with STEM classrooms that are off of it for each community. And a large auditorium to support the community as well. So this is starting to see kind of how the building is beginning to shape up. This is an image of the media center at the 3-5 school, the new library. This is showing the new entrance at the middle school. So what you're seeing is a view kind of taken to both the main visitor's entrance and the actual middle school entrance. And then you're seeing the community space, which is a large community room to support meetings like this and other community events. And then a series of music and classrooms to support band and chorus and general music. One of the things we're doing is we're trying to bring the natural environment into the building. So we're working with... We're looking at a lot of wood and stone veneer and materials that really work with your surroundings. This is kind of a direct view, looking directly at the middle school entrance, and then looking at the elementary school entrance. So again, now this view is taken from the opposite side of the building. You're starting to see the smaller learning community for 3-5, and the entrance actually to the elementary school. The high school, I'm not going to actually go over. The big thing with the high schools, we're reorganizing it essentially into departments, where there will be a humanities department, a math and science and STEM department, as well as an art and music department. One of the big things we are doing is we're looking at turning the library into a true media center with a STEM maker space classroom in the back, and opening up the area outside of here as a student commons. So you can start to see what that starts to look like. So this is actually a view just outside of this room, where we take that stair down that goes up to the second floor space, and actually pull that floor out to make the library a two-story space. And in doing so, we're able to avoid putting an elevator in and a lot of reconstruction work that was required there. And that's a view kind of now in the library itself, looking up into the main common space. The big piece of the high school is providing access to the main entrance. So we're looking at adding a ramp that gets you down to this entrance, as well as making a big connection between the buildings, which right now, you have to actually go out of the building to get to the other end of the building, and then also putting in a secure entrance as well. So this is kind of a view at the top of the high school, looking down into a main secure vestibule and the main offices. So the next steps, this is sort of where we are right now with looking more closely at the project cost, what the tax impact is based on what the project cost will be, and the vote timeframe. We're targeting a December vote so that we can begin our public relations and community outreach and complete our pre-referendum design. I think that's all I have.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board or the public? Mr. Williams?
Thank you for that presentation. I have a few questions, David. My first question is actually to Mary. Mary, would the tax impact be lessened if our tax base, if our ratables increase? Ratables, ratables, things that are... Things that are ratable are the... Yes, yes. My question was if...
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So if you're... And as an example, let's say you want to raise a million dollars. If your assessments... If your assessment is $100 or $100, depending on how your assessment goes up and down, will impact the tax rate, but it's not going to change the amount that you raise.
Right, okay. So I guess maybe I didn't ask the right question, and let me be more direct. There are some proposed projects, construction projects within our district that have not come to fruition. For instance, Elmwood property, the Hartsdale property at Four Corners. So... And once those projects come online, the tax base will increase, and the amount of tax revenue will increase. If that comes online and those things, and we get obviously revenue from that, the impact of this project on the taxpayers is lessened. Is that correct?
If you add more assessed value, the taxable rate will go down.
Okay, thank you. So... And that's one point that I wanted to emphasize to you all. I sent a bunch of... And we'll talk more about this at the work session. I sent a bunch of articles through Ivy, and there wasn't any context to them. But a few of the articles spoke about projects in different towns or different types of projects that are being done by different communities. And certainly, the Hartsdale-Four Corners project is consistent with a lot of other projects in the sense that they are developing kind of... Mixed-use development of...
I'm sorry.
You know I'm old. Mixed-use developments with retail and residential, and you know, the residential apartments. And we can debate whether or not they'll have an impact. The developer says there's going to be zero impact on our district. Some people at the town says it's a lot of impact. Quite frankly, the answer often is in the middle. And obviously, then there is the project at Elmwood, where they want to have 55-plus housing. And again, you know, should it be single-family style or townhouse style? The point that I'm making is this, folks. Whether... Our council has advised that we not take a position on projects, development projects like this. But I think as individuals, I know I'm certainly ready to have a conversation with our town leaders, to tell them to pass these projects, not only because it increases revenue, but the downside is this. We have that situation, and I didn't want to... I'm sorry for going into a discussion about tax stuff, but I think it's relevant here. If you take a look at Four Corners, for example, as we know, there's a lot of vacancies there. Basically, tax revenue is not being maximized. If that project is approved, and they build it, and... The short answer is tax revenues become greater, because it becomes a higher assessment. The point that I'm making is this. We're also going to... You know, obviously, we want to keep the impact, the financial impact to the community as low as possible. But the town has to step up, our town leaders have to step up and approve projects that increase our tax base. Now, the fact of the matter is, we could have that... And again, I'm not trying to advocate for the Four Corners, but if that thing is generating X dollars, as it is right now, and maybe X minus one, because if they lose tenants and the place goes bankrupt, then we're getting less than X, right? Versus if they develop it, and just based on assessed valuation, it's X plus one, X plus two, we get 65 cents on every dollar, right? So it's in our best interests, so long as we obviously build some things in to protect, you know, protect the district. It's in our best interest to have these things come on board. So that's one thing I just want to leave with you as we start to do this. Obviously, we shouldn't... We've been advised as a board not to take a position. But I know as an individual, I am going to start to talk to the town board about getting these things done, because it's good for the district as well, it's good for our finances. And of course, they have to be done in a correct and measured way that lessens the impact. So that's a long way to... You answered my question, Mary, and I was a little bit long-winded, but I felt the need to tell you that. The other thing I wanted to ask and say was this, directly to you. So I'm sorry, your name again is?
Tina.
I should know that, Tina, by now. As I said to answer that here, I'm getting old and I forget things easily. I like the designs that I saw of the buildings. Will the final construction of the new building and the updated renovations of Jackson and Woodlands, will they be architecturally consistent? One thing I want to avoid is a mishmash of styles and designs.
Yeah. So we're looking at refacing a lot of this building and introducing the same type of material that appears like wood. In fact, it's a cementitious material that's not wood. But we'll be looking at utilizing the same material, maybe in a different fashion, but on this high school as well, so that, yes, we do tie in all the buildings. And you could... You may have seen from the view of the high school, the canopy, the new canopy that we're building to cover the ramp coming in for accessibility, has wood on the underside of it. So we are trying to introduce the same types of materials, and really to refresh the entire feel of the campus and to tie the campus together.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No, no, we do have an elevator in this building, yes. We... If we were to reuse the second floor of the library, which is now guidance offices, and which we're relocating anyway, if we were to occupy that space, there would need to be elevator access to it. Right now, there is not to that particular space. Yes, they can. But as we do upgrades, there are certain code-required upgrades that we have to... We have to partake because of the amount of renovations that we're doing.
Wait, Cora, and then...
Listening to Mr. Williams, what he said sounded very interesting. However, we have to make sure that our school district is ready for the influx of units that want to come into Greenberg, into our school district. I wouldn't hate to see our classrooms become 30 and 35 children in a classroom, because we don't have the space to accommodate all of those units that want to come in. And one of the things that we have to understand is that people from the various areas of New York State want to move here, because we're the best of the best. We have every highway, every byway connecting New York and connecting Connecticut, and they're willing to move here, and it's happening. So I would just caution us to be very careful about what is being built in our school district, and how many units, and how many are going to accommodate children, because we may not be able to accommodate all of the children that come in. And we have to be very careful that we don't overload our classrooms. And by overloading the classrooms, minimize the educational experience of our children.
David? David.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, that point is well taken, Cora. And that's why I said, if I didn't use the word care, care has to be taken. But the point that I'm making is this. So, we have, and again, you know, unfortunately, I'm going to use real examples because we have some real projects on the books. But, so for instance, the people at Elmwood, they said that was 55-plus. That's what they've said. Typically, 55-plus, you don't have any children living there, right? All right? So, so that's, that's one project that probably is not going to add a lot. Now, could somebody do something illegal? Perhaps. But I think they were talking about 200-plus units there. 200-plus units are not going to have at least one child in there. The point, the point that I'm making though, the overarching point that I'm making is that Elmwood property is now generating $300,000 in tax. Because we, I listened to the, the meeting that they had on there. I forget what the, what the final amount, the projected tax revenue is post-construction, but it's going to be in the millions. We're getting 65% of $300,000 right now versus 65 cents of, let's say a million, I know it's more than a million. I'm not a mathematician, but that works for me. And with the potential of, with the potential of there not being a lot of additional children, that's a no-brainer for me. And that lowers the cost, the impact to the taxpayers. So, it makes sense for, listen, it makes sense for me to say something to the town board and maybe for you all to say something to the town, to the town board, to the degree you agree with my logic. The other project, the apartment project, yeah, you know, I listened to both sides. We had the developer come here and they said zero impact because it's going to be one- to-two-bedroom apartments. Those typically don't have children. Zero impact, really. But I also listened to other people who said it's going to be teeming with children. I don't believe that is correct either. Possibly it's somewhere in the middle. But if it's somewhere in the middle, we, we very possibly could accommodate that. And more importantly, more importantly, more importantly, what? Oh, thank you. More importantly, we're getting a premium amount of money, right? So, right now, I don't know how much that Four Corners properties, properties are generating, right? But it's, it's not optimized right now, because we see the amount of vacancies in those properties, right? So, so that developed, so those owners are stressed right now from a financial standpoint. They redeveloped this property, it gets reassessed, we're making much more money. The town is making much more money, of which we get 65%. I think we can then accommodate those children because we have more money. The point is this. We, we have to look at, we have to look, we have to look, we have to look beyond our typical, we have to take atypical, atypical actions to make this work. And part of that is telling the town, telling the people that we elect as town board members to take a look at this, get it done, and maximize our revenues, our tax revenues. Whether, we should be saying that anyway, regardless of the, the school project, but it's more pertinent, just given what we're trying to do. So, don't be distracted by the fact that a few more kids will be coming in. We could, we can negotiate that away. Again, the 55-plus community, chances are, that's not going to add too many children. That's just the fact. And the other one, like I said, they said zero. I'm not going to believe that. But I'm also not going to believe that there's going to be two children per every unit. It's just not the fact. And right now, we're, right now, that's underutilized and we're not generating the revenue that we could, which would reduce the tax impact to this project, which is much needed from, number one, an educational standpoint, as well as from a cost standpoint.
And I would respond that both of you have valid points and that we need to quantify the impact. And if we can do the math, that would be a great thing. Ms. Morris?
If I'm not mistaken, you have a targeting date of December to vote for the bond in this project, the bond and the taxes?
Yes.
Okay. So, hearing everything that has been said, and I hear the projection, I hear your futuristic expectation of the town and all the businesses and whatnot, but you're talking about December. And December is, what, two months or three months away? And if that's the case, we're still looking at the numbers that are on her projection. So, therefore, we're looking at the $171 million bond plus the increase in taxes. And we do understand their condos, et cetera, maybe for a hundred, but I do believe the majority of homes are definitely the 3, 4, 5, 600,000 dollars and more, where the taxes will be definitely something that would be significantly increased. And I do appreciate what you have said, but December, we don't have all of that. You may have all what you're speaking about in the future, and that's convincing the town and, you know, whatnot, to do what they need to do. But if we're looking at the figures right now, we're looking at increase in taxes as well as you're asking for this bond up this year.
I think Ms. McClellan was next?
I'd just like to respond to that, if I may. Pastor Morris, that's a good point. But we've always said that there's going to be a tax increase as a result of this, because nothing is free. I'm saying that the full impact of the tax increase will be mitigated by these other things. But, but per your point, and your, your point about the timing is very well said. And I think one thing we haven't really said enough, because it's kind of in the weeds. But Mary, could you please explain to the audience that even though we're talking these numbers and Pastor Morris happened to bring up, you know, the December timeframe, could you explain to people that, could you just give, give her, give the audience the timetable for how, you know, money is raised and how the tax impact occurs on a project like this? Because I don't think, it's kind of minutia, but I think, given what Pastor Morris said, I think the, the folks out there might find it interesting.
Okay. And Tina, you'll have to correct me, make sure I'm on the right timeline. So, when it's passed in December, it would take approximately a year for the architects to actually design the final plans and specs. So, we're looking at December of 2019, by the time the plans and specs are designed and submitted to State Ed. Tina, when would you think State Ed approval? Well, we'll probably do an expedited review, so. 2020. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. We're thinking construction would begin spring of? 2020. 2020. Okay. Right. So, if you're doing, if the construction starts in 2020, so you're in the 20, 21 school year, 21 school year. By the time you first borrow anything or issue any, any type of debt, it's more than likely going to be in the 21, 22 school year, with your first payment being in 22, no, you'd make your first payment in 21, 22. And then, it's not going to be the full dollar amount. So, you would never issue a bond for the full dollar amount. It would come in in phases, because you're not going to have. You're bonding as you need the money, essentially. Right. So, the bonds come on at different times, which has an effect on when you see the impact on your own taxes. So, I think, what, Mary, and correct me if I'm wrong, your initial, you wouldn't see an impact for, for years out. And that impact would, would change by the year because of how the bonds come on. So, bonds come on and off at different times, essentially.
So, you waited for May. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We waited for May. It's not that big of a deal. Yeah, so we waited for May, just to make sure everyone's comfortable. You wait for May. It's only a couple of months. That's just a suggestion.
Wait for May for what?
Just for the approval, because I guess a lot of people are just uneasy.
Well, so if you wait for May, you miss an entire construction season, which escalates the project considerably. Well, it's 6% per year of escalation factor.
It is that devastating to wait until May for a number of reasons. Because like Tina said, you miss a construction cycle, number one. Number two, our goal here on the board is to pass this bond. And we realize, the problem with waiting until May is you're also doing the budget and other things. And you don't want to have too many things going before the public at once. I'm just going to be real with you. That's, that's part of the process. We've heard this before from, from people who've done this, whether it's our architects, whether it's project managers, attorneys. That's just the fact. People want to dance around with it. The reason we're doing this in December is because it's expeditious to do so as opposed to doing it in May, when, when one would think logically, because we're obviously doing the budget. But that's hitting the public with too much. So, that's why, so those are the two major reasons why we're doing it in December.
Okay, Ms. McClellan.
Ms. McClellan has been waiting.
The property taxes is outrageous here in Greenberg. And they're going up every year, because we are 100% market value. So, now we're going to throw in the school. The school, which is, which is very important, but it's going to cause more taxes. Then you're saying 55-plus. As the age go up and people are living longer and the star exemption, the enhanced star, is not going to bring you a lot of money, because they don't have to pay that much in school taxes. When they hit that enhanced star, it is low. They're paying very little. I know someone with a condominium, they only pay about 200 or 300 dollars, okay? So, I'm just saying, you've got to be careful what you want. I like to see more businesses in the area, more businesses come to take on the taxes, like White Plains, City of White Plains. They're very fortunate. They're able to help the homeowners. What we're going to be doing is putting a lot of pressure on the homeowners, condos and the co-ops. They're not paying but a certain amount. And then they get the enhanced star. They're, some of them are not paying much in taxes, especially school taxes.
I, I think I want to ask a question of Mary on, on your point. I think, I think the business income idea is a good one. I think that, if I understand correctly, is there not a star? Is there not income from the state that comes to us to make up for the exemption in star?
Yes, there is.
Okay. So, the people, the people, the senior citizens paying enhanced star, the reduced rate, there's money coming for the state to make up the shortfall in terms of what we would get from them if they didn't have star. So, the state's feeding us money to make up for that. So, that's a watch.
But what they get to a point, is the state's going to get to a point where they're going to get the money? I'm just bringing this out. Where are they going to get the money from, okay? We already know what the seniors are getting now. And you have so many people leaving the community because of the taxes.
Yes. The next person? Wait, wait, I think Mona's been waiting. Mona?
Okay. Were you at the DEIS meeting on Thursday?
No, we presented before and it overlapped.
Okay. Because you, on your presentation here, you spoke about what the people at the meeting brought up. And I was at that meeting, and two of the biggest things that people spoke about were the traffic issues and potential flooding. And I didn't see any of that on your presentation here tonight.
Yeah, so that's all in the environmental impact statement that will be addressed as, and will be a part of the comments.
None of that was addressed here in your presentation. Those are two really big issues that do need to be addressed in the final.
They are being addressed.
Okay.
But they are being addressed by our consultant. I mean, that's their, that's their role.
Okay, all right. Because those are like real big issues for the community members. Thank you.
So, your comments were not ignored. It just wasn't part of this presentation. I know, I know. They weren't ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a question, Mary?
There was some projects that's going up in the Bay area. Are you aware of those? And if you're not aware of, could you go to Time Hall and talk to Tim Lewis to find out what projects are already out there coming up? I know there's a senior building that's coming.
On Manhattan Avenue.
On Manhattan Avenue. And this is going to impact the taxes. And there's something else that the president talked about.
This is a pilot agreement.
We've been looking at it. My husband knows more about all of this than I do. But anyway, taxes have got a, probably, it's going to affect our property taxes next year. I don't know all of the general.
Mrs. Spells.
But he's aware of all of that, because he's gone to the churches and he's spoken about how it will impact charity. You know, we give a lot of charity. And how it's going to affect us, should we pull back from charity? Should we be aware? So, a lot of people don't know that next year it's going to be a hard time for a lot of homeowners.
It's already.
Mrs. Spells.
You should respond to that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. Cora, did you want to speak first?
I've been waiting for a while. Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that this community is aging out. You have more senior citizens in this community right now than you have families with young children. And many of the seniors are being extremely aggravated because they're having a hard time paying their taxes. As a matter of fact, a group, I was in a group a few years back where we contributed money to save a few seniors because people were trying to foreclose on their properties. A lot of our seniors are moving south or wherever because they can't afford the taxes. So, the more we pile on them, the more they're either going to have to go into, you know, one lady is already in a nursing home. We put her in a nursing home because she can't afford it. But there are people who cannot afford it, and I don't know what's going to happen to them in the future as far as taxes on their homes are concerned. Because there are those out there right now that are checking the town rosters to see if they can foreclose upon senior housing. And that's being done every day. So, I just want us to be careful about what we do and how we do it.
Remember that timing is, well, timing is everything. But this may not be the time. So, we have to look into the timing is what.
All right, Terry, and then.
Mrs. Spells, per your comment about the senior housing project. First of all, we had a presentation by the developer at our last work session. You said a couple of things there that I think is probably not correct. So, for instance, generally speaking, development increases the tax base, increases tax revenue. All right? So, that doesn't hurt the existing tax base. Secondly, that particular project, they want to do a payment in lieu of taxes. And they sent, they sat down with us and they, they gave us some numbers. And, and I asked them, and we received some, some information from them. So, basically, and I'm just going off the first year. The project, they want to pay us 20, once, once they start paying, once they start paying, the year that they start making payments, it would be only $20,000 to the town, which I found to be a problem. And of which, only 65%, 65% or 13,000 would come to the school district. It's $13,000 more than we had before. But, and I even scribbled some notes to have a discussion later on about this. But that, that particular, that particular development is going to, going to be generating revenue of over 300, net income, net income, after all expenses to the developer, of over $300,000. So, I think they should pay more than the pilot that they're paying. But that's, that's another discussion. But, but my, my point is this. Again, to help pay for this project and to have, to minimize the impact on the taxpayers, we need to make sure that the town maximizes the tax revenue from exist, from, from new projects, not existing projects, from new projects. And, and again, we have to, and per your comment about, you know, going to the meeting. I plan to go to the meetings on these, because I want to make sure that we minimize the impact to the district. And Francis Sheehan came here, and he was very sympathetic to making sure that, for instance, we manage the impact that apartments have on this. And certainly, I can't speak for my colleagues here. I think we all want to, want to do that. But. do that, but one thing I just want us to make sure is that we don't sit on our hands or I should say that the town board sits on his hands and drags his feet on these things and misses an opportunity to maximize those tax benefits, tax revenues. Listen, I'm sympathetic to the tax situation, but we have never said that this was going to be tax neutral. We knew that it was going to increase taxes. What I'm suggesting is that we become more aggressive individually with our town, our town board members to let them know that they need to be, they need to move on these projects and move on them in a judicious way so that tax revenues are maximized and the impact is minimized. There's no, you know, there's no free lunches as they say in economics, right? There's always going to be some thing that you have to pay. I just want to make sure we're not paying New York City prices for lunch and paying a cheaper price, if you will. And that's basically the best that you can do. We're not saying that this isn't going to cost any money, but let's try to find ways to minimize the impact. The other point that I just want to say is, my colleague said that there are more senior citizens than families with young children in this district. That's not the case, number one. And part of the, and that's not, I just say that as a matter of fact, not because I'm trying to diss senior citizens, but the fact of the matter is we are a more attractive area for a number of reasons for families because we're one of the more affordable areas in Westchester. So we are attracting families. And the fact that part of the reason why we need these enhancements to our buildings and this new building is the fact that we have a growing student population. So something has to give. We can't keep cramming students into high view and Bailey and repairing Bailey as much as we might, you know, have a emotional attachment to Bailey. We're throwing good, what's the old phrase? Throwing good money after bad. Did I say that right? Good money after bad. And that's just the fact.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Let's move on. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Chase?
So before we move on, I think there are some things that CSRCH and SAVN will need from us in order to move forward because there are some timelines that we need to adhere to as it relates to public relations and communicating with the full community because there's so many people who are not here who may not be watching this and so there needs to be communication. So Tina, what do you need from us in order to move forward and how soon do we need it?
To meet a December vote, we need an agreement on the total project cost and the scope.
Can you give me the timeline by which you need that from?
Like yesterday, honestly.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah. We're, you know, the timeline is getting very, very tight for us to meet our requirements. By the end of October, we have to have a project cost and implication of taxes nailed down without any reservation.
Right. So, thank you. So members of the board, I'm going to need to know from you feedback and maybe, I don't know if you want to poll the board tomorrow, but I need feedback in order to give feedback to our consultants whether we're going to move forward with what we agreed or whether we're going to move forward with what was presented because they can't just walk away and we wait until another meeting. We have to make some definitive decisions.
So why don't we, at this point, at least get, take the temperature of each board member and we'll go through once we stop. Okay? We're not going to debate. We'll just speak very briefly.
I think that the board, I would like to give the board an opportunity to deliberate among themselves as a consolidation committee and then if, you know, however they wish to do that is up to them. But I just need some direction in order to how, you know, how we should move forward. And I'll leave that up to you, Mr. President.
Mr. Warner, can I get a copy of the presentation? I can't see from here.
Yeah. So if you can, Tina, if you can just email it to me, I'll email it to them right away. Fair enough? Okay.
All right. I'm concerned about the environmental impact. I think we should bite the bullet and go forward based on the fine tenets. They're trying to put things down, but I want to make sure that the environmental impact is taken care of and if that's not satisfactory, then we can't go forward. So that's the story.
Full agreement.
Not the money at this point. It doesn't mean it's going to pass. It means we'll put it out there and see what we get.
Also, I have a question about the traffic study. If we're going to be deciding on a number, I haven't heard what was the outcome of the traffic study. I thought they were going back to look at that after that meeting that you had with Poet's Corner and Juniper Association verbalizing some concern.
Did you attend the last community meeting?
I was not at that meeting. I'm going off of the presentation.
So there's a meeting scheduled with the town and with the consultant who's doing the traffic study to look at some of the ways to mitigate traffic. In any case, the implications will improve because of the measures we're looking at taking.
And so you want a number before that traffic study is complete?
Yeah. I mean, I think the traffic stu, that doesn't have an impact on necessarily the overall project cost because those, that, the studies are not funded from the capital project.
So the option of looking at a fourth egress from the campus is off the table? That's not a possibility?
No, no. We have a, we, there is a, there are, there's two, there's coming in from Hartsdale and then there's coming in from the Jackson.
There's three.
And then there's a third. There is, the fourth one is not an option.
So that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, but not because of traffic. There's a number of reasons why. It has to do with clearing all the land. It has to do with the neighborhood. That's to the north of the property line. So as of now, yes, there will be three entrance and exit points.
All right. Any other?
Will there be any additional costs, you know, with the traffic studies?
We, there is a proposal for an additional study for the traffic. So that's the only cost we're aware of right now.
And that was put in your board packet?
Okay. Okay.
It's referenced in the board packet.
It is referenced.
If not, I'm not sure it's actually attached, but at least I couldn't see the attachment. Check it.
Okay.
Other comments?
This internet has, internet darting.
Internet?
Tina, so just to review, real briefly, what you did. When you have taken away all the different items that you, because you even added to.
Do you want me to touch this?
No. I mean, I don't need it, but I know that you.
I'm emailing it to you.
You added additional items that you've taken off even from our last meeting. With all those, what did you say was the final total? I just wanted to be sure.
It was 171, I believe.
I think it was 171.
I'd have to open the presentation again, but it's approximately 171. So the 171 is, takes into the account the reductions, not additions of anything? Yeah. Okay.
That 171 will give us the classrooms we're looking for?
Oh, yes.
Now, if we have any further cuts, what impact would that have on the total project?
So the only other significant pieces of the project scope that we could potentially consider removing to help reduce the project cost, there are some site, there are some site pieces like not doing, not repaving any of the roads and only building the new roads to connect. That will have some savings. There's reducing the capacity of the new auditorium at the 38. So maybe not building the balcony. That has some cost savings. Those are the two things we did not take out yet, but there are some savings there.
Okay.
And I think in the presentation, you know, we can pull out what, actually that number is shown of what that was in the presentation.
Thank you.
I think just to clarify, there's, you know, again, we're trying to maintain the program, the educational program aspects of the, of every school. So cutting classrooms is not an option because you need to be able to fit your enrollment and the enrollment projections do show that there's growth 10 years out. So there aren't that many places to pull from.
Ms. Williams?
Dave, so I know just before the last round of questionings, you had asked about the next steps and I'm a little concerned or curious or confused, one of those, about the timing here because if I heard Tina correctly, she needed this information yesterday. And if we, if we wait to have a consolidation committee meeting, I mean, even if we did it ASAP, today is Tuesday, the earliest we could do that meeting is Friday, right, Ivy? Because we'd have to notice it tomorrow and.
The meeting notice requirement is three days if you have the time to notice the meeting. If you wanted to do something less than 24 hours, then the board would have to waive the notice provision to have it less than 24 hours. If you wanted to have it at 6 o'clock tomorrow, that's less than 24 hours. So you would each have to waive the notice provision.
Right. Thank you, Ivy. So, so, you know, just given, excuse me. Sorry. Just given the time constraint that we are under, if nothing else, I'd like to see that we, before we move off this topic, if we're going to meet again on this, I think we need to have a date set. Frankly, I'm ready to move forward, but, you know, assuming my colleagues aren't and need some more time, but time is of the essence here. So if more time is needed, at least I would like for us to establish a time for that next meeting, a date for that next meeting so that we could give Tina and CS Arch the information that they require from us so that we could move forward.
All right. I'm, my opinion is that our next opportunity is probably the 2nd of October when we have our work session. However, I'm concerned that I don't know the outcome of the traffic study or what the timeframe for the traffic study is because the, as far as I'm concerned, the major, major environmental impact at this point is that if the traffic doubles outside of Pat Capone and then it backs up to the point at which West Hartsdale Avenue becomes unusable, then we don't have a viable project. I want to see.
Dave, I get your concern, but that's typically not how building projects work or mitigating the, what they need from us is approval of the concept. Am I correct? If for some reason, the traffic study says, worst case scenario, if we decide not to move forward, then we don't move forward. But one thing is for sure, if we wait for the traffic study, we're not going to meet that December deadline.
So the initial traffic study was done and there were no significant impacts to not move forward.
That is false.
That's not, yeah. That's not how the people.
You got an F. You're at a point where you're waiting for a minute and a half to get hit out the door.
Yes, but there were, there were measures, there were measures to.
You put a signal up and I don't think that's legal.
There were measures.
You're too close to another signal. Go ahead.
There were measures to mitigate that and that's what, that's the next step of the study of understanding what the best approach is. But in no way did the study say you should not continue to pursue this.
That's not what they're paid to do, but the actual results of the study indicate an F. That's the worst possible rating.
Dave.
Could you explain, where did the F come from?
Dave.
The F is the, all right. So you do a traffic study, you figure out what the current traffic load is, you figure out a no project version of what happens with the population goes up slightly over a couple of years. And you say, now let's add the project in. Now, instead of the traffic that you have just relating to the parents and the kids that you've got on the campus now, you take all the kids from Hyview and all the kids from Bailey and you put them on the campus and you take all that traffic and you add that in and then see what happens. You make a projection.
No, what I'm asking you is you said there was an F. So what I'm asking you is.
There's a rating system for each intersection and an A means the intersection is.
No, okay, wait, wait. You're not understanding my question. You're not understanding. I understand the concept of grading. What I'm asking you is, on the 20th, I believe that was, did, did the traffic study, did they reveal to us at the traffic study that it was itself rated as an F? That's, I'm asking you where.
It's in the table. It's in the draft EIS.
And they said it was an F?
The intersection.
The intersection.
Right. But again, there are measures to mitigate it.
Which is, have somebody stand out there and direct traffic like they do down the street or you put up a signal.
So David, if I hear you correctly, you're ready to say no to this project.
Because you.
Excuse me, excuse me. No to this project to mitigate the overcrowding in our schools, to mitigate the, to enhance the educational capabilities of the district, to enhance our educational offering, to be more cost effective in the building management because of a traffic, because of a traffic issue that can be, can be solved? Are you telling me that?
If you can't hit the school, the school doesn't help you. You have to solve the problem.
Dave, well, listen, again, CS Arch needs a decision from us sooner rather than later. October 3rd or whatever date you said does not work. Tina just said that she needed this yesterday to keep this on track for December. So that's your opinion and you're free to your opinion, but what I suggest.
Hold your word and find out your opinion.
Okay. All right.
I give my opinion.
David, just a question.
How, excuse me, Cora.
Oh.
Just one quick question. How quickly could you get us that, you know, remedy for the traffic? You said there are some remedies. That's in the work.
The summary, the traffic, the study lists what the recommendations or some solutions are.
Right.
The next step was to schedule a meeting with the town to see what their perspective was and to see if they are willing to provide any relief. So that's been scheduled. I don't know exactly what the date is because again, this is, one of us from CS Arch will attend, but that's our consultant who is leading this piece of the project.
All right. So if the board okay the plan now, there's room to make some corrections to the traffic later?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right.
Yes.
So, okay. Thank you.
Just so that everybody's clear, what we need, we need a decision as whether the scope of work laid out is acceptable based on what we anticipate the project cost to be.
Right.
Or whether we need to go back to the drawing board and look at alternatives, which as you know, we've done already. I mean, we've presented now several times and, you know, from, from one cost up to a much higher cost. And so that's, that's the direction we're asking for now because in order for us to apply a maximum cost allowance and to get the information from the state, it has to be done in the next couple of weeks in order to get the information back by the end of October and to meet the timeline that's been laid out for several months now.
All right. As long as that correction can be made later on.
Yes.
I support it. I think Cora had her end up.
Okay.
I just want to remind everybody that you had two civic associations closely connected to this school district that was very concerned about the traffic. And so I don't know how you all are going to go, but make sure you have those people in mind, you know, because they're important and they're not little civic associations. They have a nice piece of our constituency. So make sure you keep them in mind, you know, especially with this traffic because one lady said she didn't want to be holed up in her house because of the traffic. So please, you know, consider them.
Tina, I heard you read off a list. You said you're going to email it so and Dr. Chase will forward it along to us. I do want to look at that because I. I do want to look at that because I did hear you read off a list of a couple of things you have to cut. I know at our last meeting when you presented, you said one of the things was having the joint gym with the divider. I heard that, but I did hear some other things. So I guess you guys went back and sliced a little bit more. So I just definitely need to see that before agreeing or, or disagreeing to this sort of thing.
Terry.
Dave. We need to keep this on track. So, if, if we've all finished saying what we're going to say...
Let's go forward.
Let's go forward and if you want to get a resolution or pull or whatever, so that we can give Tina, or, or even if you want to say, if you want to schedule a meeting, but that meeting has to be done before the 3rd. Quite frankly...
Before the 2nd.
But quite frankly, I'm ready to go now and I think a few others. I haven't heard from, well, I heard from Lloyd. I'm not going to speak for Lloyd. Sounded like he was ready to go now. I haven't heard from Antoinette. I haven't heard definitively from Cora. I've heard Tracy needs more time. I've heard, I've heard something from you. I'm not quite clear. But I think we need to hear from everybody so that we could either, either schedule this meeting or go for, or, or give Tina and CS Arch the, the direction that they need. And I think the first thing is to determine if we can, if they're, if we can give them the direction that they need.
All right. So you're trying to schedule a meeting in less than...
No, I'm trying to first give them the direction that they need. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking you. That's what the, that's what the ask was from Tina and from Dr. Chase.
I'm, I'm sorry, David. I, unless I'm incorrect and misunderstanding what's going on here, I just heard a presentation that started at, I think, 10 o'clock or after 10 o'clock at night from a distance that I can't even see, the doggone screen. And I'm being asked to make a decision on that from, with some changes from the last time that we met, with some numbers. I would just like to be able to read the PowerPoint, see it overnight. I'm not saying you have to schedule a meeting in three days. I'm not saying you have to have a meeting. I'm fine with reading it and know what I'm agreeing to before agreeing to it. I can't see how anybody here, I, I don't know how anyone was able to see the PowerPoint. I don't know how much closer the other board members are, but it, we would have to read it.
Mr. President, may I please make a recommendation so that we can move the meeting forward?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Tina will, excuse me. Uh huh, that's okay, honey. Tina's going to present it to me tonight, the presentation. I'm going to send it to the board. Mr. President, I kindly and respectfully ask that you please poll the board by 11 o'clock tomorrow morning and then give me a yea or nay so that I can communicate that to Tina, giving every board member an opportunity to see the presentation upfront and personal so that people could make an informed decision. It appears that I do have a very intelligent board and we may not need to have a meeting. I think the board is very clear as to the traffic study will happen simultaneously with other things that need to happen in terms of the remedies. But I need to let CS Arch know that we're going to move forward. Moving forward doesn't mean it's the end-all, be-all. But moving forward means that they need to work on their documentation to State Education Department based on what was presented. But I do take Mrs. Mayor's comments seriously. So if I, if you're going to, I know you're going to send it to me tonight. Send it to me now. And if you can just poll the board, please, and have an answer for me by 11 o'clock, that will be extremely helpful. So I hope you will consider my recommendation.
Is that acceptable to the board?
I, I just wonder why that wasn't brought to our attention at the meeting on Thursday. Because if I, if, if it was, I didn't...
No, I'm just raising my hand to speak after you speak. You can say what you need to say.
Oh, I know that. You don't have to tell me, sir.
Well, then what are you asking me for?
No, I'm not asking you.
I'm just raising my hand to get David's attention. Finish your comment.
Let's be nice.
He, he doesn't know how to be nice. He's evil right now because he ain't getting his way. Excuse me all. As I was trying to say, why, why wasn't this brought to our attention on Thursday?
What, I'm sorry, what in particular?
That you needed.
I think the board and the district have been pretty well aware of this timeframe. We laid out a schedule four months ago, six months ago, that had decisions that had to be made.
I wasn't here six months ago.
But we were told today we needed an answer yesterday.
So just to be clear, we presented to the community on Thursday. It's Tuesday. So we have done a lot of work to try to get from where we were Thursday to today. So, you know, I apologize that you didn't get this in advance, but honestly, we've been working on this nonstop from Thursday to today, looking at how can we get the numbers down.
Was it clear on Thursday?
David, I, I believe I had my hand up.
Excuse me, Terry. Was it clear on Thursday that we would need to make a decision on Tuesday? Because I was not told that on Thursday.
Tracy, could you, could you let Terry respond?
First of all, Cora, the meeting last week was specifically for the environmental, environmental impact, which had, was not their scope. That wasn't part of what they were doing. So that's, that's why you didn't hear that on, on last week. Per the other part of the comment, the last time we did meet with them, remember they had proposed that, that larger number of about 190 million? That's when we said to them, go back and make the changes to bring that down. This, this is the result of that. This is the result of that. So they had, so they had given us the scope. They had given us that bigger scope with the, with the two gyms. I don't want to, you know, you know, confuse stuff here. But we said to them, bring that down a bit. This is the result of that.
I understand that. I'm just wondering why you're having such a problem with, with not understanding the, the impact that this traffic is having on the community. That's all I'm wanting to hear. And I'm wondering why, you know, because I thought, I thought that we still had time, you know, in, in order to do this and to make this decision, you know, as to whether we were going to move on or not. Because I haven't, you understand, I haven't been here from the beginning. So I do not know. I'm just getting this in the last six, eight weeks. So I, I have not had the pleasure that you all have to go through this for the past year or so.
Andrew.
So in addition to what...
In addition to, sorry, thank you. To what Terry said, even from the last time we met as a board, there was the, the other meeting before the secret meeting that we told them to go back and chop even more. So this is like another reiteration of the chopping. Unless, I could be confusing it. It's, it's 11:02. But from my thought is, and maybe I shouldn't be separating it, my thought is right now, the vote is specifically on that. My also thought was when the secret, when we were having a secret hearing, they heard what Poets Corner, Juniper Hill, I think Fairview even had something. So they heard all those things. They said they would go back, meet with the town. So they're not even finished either. They have the task, like we've been tasking CS Arch, to go back and to make additional recommendations, see what else they can do. So I, I sort of see the two things as me voting on this. It's the same, but it, but it's different. It, so me both saying yes to this tonight, which I'm saying now, I will be saying yes to... I don't, you, you're polling me now. You don't need to call me tomorrow.
No problem.
I'm saying yes to it. This is, saying yes doesn't mean that if the traffic study comes back and the guy's, oh, no, we can't do anything, that we still do this. That, that's kind of where my, my thought is.
Yes.
I just want to be clear because we were bringing up meetings that we had two weeks ago and the meeting even before that. I want to be, I want, excuse me, I want to be clear. From what you just said before everyone else spoke was that you did a lot of work since Thursday. So that means something in this presentation includes information from Thursday, correct? You were recapping what was done on Thursday?
Yeah.
So this wasn't just your bringing the cost down from our request to bring it lower and lower and lower. There were additional things that are in your presentation. So, correct?
Yes.
So that as trustees and as board members, we should at least be able to read the presentation.
Yes, I'm talking about from, let me clarify. I am talking about last week Thursday's meeting, which is what that committee did charge them to cut additional. So where's, yes, the community, the CAC.
Just to be clear, what we're asking for is for you to tell us to move forward or at this point, not because of the overall project cost? And if it's not, then the vote has to be delayed because we can't actually meet the schedule if we don't move forward at this point.
Okay. Can't be a board member that's not going to read?
I, I'm sorry. I, you know, unfortunately, I don't have the control of how this was presented. I'm happy to share it with you right now on my surface if you'd like.
But you said you, excuse me, you said you can...
That's the, the idea of polling tomorrow? Was the thing on the floor right now?
All right. You said you can email it to, to Dr. Chase now. So why don't you do so? And then maybe we have access to a copy machine. We can get the hard copy if whoever wants it. And then this way, you know, they don't get it again tomorrow and then asking to vote on it again. So if we could get that information now, I think it would be helpful. I don't know if we have access to a copy machine.
It'll be in your email?
Uh huh.
So it'll be in your email?
Oh, yeah.
So if you have your iPad, you'll have it.
Right, so, so at least...
What happened?
All right. But at least, at least, at least, you know, everybody have been writing. But from what I heard, if we move forward with the project, nothing is etched in stone. Okay, so...
So, if, if, David, if I could, so are we, are we saying that tomorrow we are supposed to get back to Dr. Chase with our position?
Tomorrow, we will poll the board.
At what time? What time would you start?
I'm requesting at 11 o'clock. Please make sure I have an answer so I can give Tina her directive.
I can do that. Can other people do that?
What?
Is 11 a.m. a decent polling?
Yeah, my answer is, you don't have to call me. All right.
Yes. I just, I hope you all are taking into consideration the land state and the topography. Speaking right now, just like of, of Juniper Hill and Saratoga Road and Russell Street. You've got three churches. You've got the traffic coming in from 119, Dops Ferry Road going on Old Road. I just want you to look at all of that and the, I'm just... Okay, I just want to make sure you all are taking that. People are grieving their taxes and getting their taxes reduced to cost of the congestion, the traffic in that neighborhood. Just to let you know, now. Okay, I'm just, you know, I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, so that's a yes from Lloyd Newlin?
Yes.
Tracy, you want to wait till tomorrow, right? Okay, Cora. Can we poll you tomorrow morning or not? Yeah? Okay. Terry?
You don't have to call me. Mine is yes.
Your decision is yes, all right. That's a yes? All right, moving on. Superintendent's report.
Welcome to the 2018, 2019 school year. We are off to a great start and there are great things happening in the Greenberg Central School District. I'm not going to take up too much time because it is a lofty 11 o'clock and I, I do want people to get on their merry way and prepare for a full day of school tomorrow. But I want to thank the fathers and all of the men, the significant men in the lives of a child for coming out to Dad's Take Your Child to School. It was monumental. At one school at Highview, I think we had a record number of dads. We had 109 dads show up and they've never had that many dads. I want to thank the dads who stayed around longer to have Dad's and Donuts with David Warner, myself, Todd Minch and, and Brendan Gallivan. It was just a terrific meeting and a terrific feel in the school district and I can't thank those gentlemen enough. In fact, it was so monumental, Ms. McLeary, that Black Westchester Magazine reached out to me and they are giving us a full page on this particular event at Greenberg. And even though this is a national event, but they were keenly interested in Greenberg. And so you will see that in October's issue and I'll make sure that there are plenty of copies available. So I thank Damon Jones and A.J. Johnson for reaching out to Greenberg Central School District and acknowledging the great work that we're doing. I want to remind the community that Friday, this Friday, September 29th, is our first Friday movie night. Our students are busy selecting the movie for our movie night. We ask that you please come out. Many of you may have seen the Flyers around. We're starting our event at 4:15, but the movie time is at 8. Bring your blankets, bring your chairs, bring your good cheer and it's going to be a really nice event. All community members are invited to enjoy our beautiful campus on the 29th. I also want to share that Wednesday, tomorrow, is Atlantic Star Day. You heard of Atlantic Star, right? Mm-hmm. Don't start singing in here. Don't you dare start singing in here. It's late. But it is Atlantic Star Day and the Greek, town of Greenberg designated, what's tomorrow's date, the 26th? September 26th is Green, I'm sorry, is Atlantic Star Day. On Thursday, Atlantic Star will be giving a benefit concert at the Tarrytown, Doubletree Tarrytown. And some of the proceeds will go to the Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund, where they are actually giving back. And I say they're giving back because Atlantic Star, as you know, are made up of alums from Woodlands High School. We also have one member of Atlantic Star who is a member of the Greenberg Central School District currently and that's Mr. Jonathan Lewis. And so please come out to support them because in supporting them, you are also supporting the Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund. I'm going to ask that we continue to watch the Greenberg Central School District on the public access channel. Please follow us on social media. If you don't necessarily follow social media, which I know so many people do, please also know you can see us on TV. There's, download our app and to see what we're doing because we're constantly updating the great things that are happening in our school district. And believe me when I tell you, there are great things happening in our school district. Before I move forward this evening, I want to acknowledge a staff member. I want to acknowledge Ms. Terry Kincaid, who passed away last week. Ms. Terry Kincaid was our Director of Student Services. She passed away Monday morning at 2:45 a.m., peacefully surrounded by loved ones. Ms. Terry Kincaid worked in our school district for approximately three years. She dedicated her life to advocating for students who could not advocate for themselves and that students with disabilities. She worked tirelessly with many of our families here in the school district, not just with students with disabilities, but also worked with families of children in general. There are, there are, um... There are events going on in our school. There are class designs in our schools right now because of the work of Ms. Kincaid. Until the day she died, Ms. Kincaid was reaching out to teachers, administrators, staff, and putting systems in place. I myself received a text message from her, 6:45 p.m., hours before she passed away. Now that's dedication. From her hospital bed, she was texting, emailing, phone conferences. I don't know how well you got to know Terry, but I got to know a wonderful person. And Greenberg Central School District lost a beautiful soul. And if you didn't get to know Terry, that's really unfortunate. So, Mr. Warner, if it's okay with you, I think that we owe Terry, who've dedicated so much of her time, her energy, and even when she was weak and feeble, who was working for this district, for our children, a moment of silence at our public meeting.
Very good.
I thank you for indulging me in that and I really appreciate it. She's a beautiful soul and, um, let's keep her family and those who are left to mourn her in our thoughts as we navigate throughout our day. I want to thank you. Have a great evening and again, please continue to follow us on social media and on our public access channel as well as our mobile app. Have a good night.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business Report.
Good evening. Um, you have two reports for the month of June and July. The, the general fund beginning balance for June 2018 was $26,991,544.64. We received for the months of June and July, $1,029,80.26 in receipts and we issued $6,795,681.72 in payroll checks as well as another $5,128,557.57 in accounts payable checks. Overall, in the last two months, we issued 1,820 payroll checks and another 725 in accounts payable checks while we're audited.
Thank you. Committee reports, are there any committee reports? Terry.
Dave, uh, are we, are we still gonna go into executive session after this?
Yes.
It's 11:15. If, if it... Excuse me. Do I have the floor, Dave?
You do.
Thank you. Um, just given the late hour and the fact that we still have a lot to do, could we, I'm asking, if, if it pleases the board, the rest of my colleagues, if we could do the committee reports at the work session, next work session?
I was planning on doing my committee report at the next work session. If other people want to do the same thing, that's fine. The next meeting of the Community Engagement Committee is October 22nd at Highview at 7 p.m. I will give you a report at the work session. Approvals. Do I hear a motion to approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Non-instructional personnel items. Do I hear a motion to approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, abstentions? Motion carries.